Jake, you okay to press the microphone? Just going to ask, we're inside.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the February 27th, 2024 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting is being conducted, obviously, here in City Hall. We are not doing the Zoom part of things these days, so I just wanted to note that. We'll go right into a little bit of business, and then we'll get started with the actual cases before us. The Chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as the raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols and procedures that are identified in our bylaws. Applicants have up to 15 minutes to present their cases, and then that will be followed by questions from the Board. Next, anybody wishing to speak in favor of the case that's been presented will have up to five minutes to provide their testimony. And then anybody that has questions, concerns, or opposition will next be sought if you have that category of concern or inquiry. And each person will have up to five minutes there. If there is opposition or questions or concern, then the applicant will have up to five minutes to speak in response to that. And then after that, one and only one person that had the questions or opposition will be permitted to speak again in rebuttal before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. If we get to that point, I'll guide us through that part of the logistics if we need to. We will manage the -- we'll monitor the time up here at the table and let you know if you're running out of time for your five- or 15-minute allocation. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. Just a quick, little bit of information in that regard, a special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits, but only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, there are five points of law that are required to be met, and these are outlined in the application and will be summarized in any Board motions. Meanwhile, a variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not directly permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, but they are different than those for the special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and the State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, and we have four members in attendance tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest a decision that this Board makes. Should you believe that we rendered a decision that was in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. Written rehearing requests must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can still file and appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk in the Planning Department for more information about that. For tonight's meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. Again, myself, Rob Shaw, the Chair, Mr. J.P. Boucher, our Clerk, Mr. Jay Menkara, and Mr. Josh Neely. Again, we are all full-time members of the Board. And actually, a note that Mr. Neely just joined us as a full-time member after serving some time as one of the alternate members, so we welcome him as a full-time member. In addition to the Board members, we have Mr. Carter Falk, who is Deputy Planning Manager with the City of Nashua. So, yeah, and as far as -- I will do roll call, but even that, I think, was something mostly instituted only after we got to our online meetings due to the pandemic. So, Mr. J.B. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Jay Menkara?
Present.
Mr. Josh Neely?
Present.
And Mr. Rob Shaw is present. So we have four full-time Board members here. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The case at 581 and 593 Amherst Street will not be heard tonight. It has been postponed to the March 26th, 2024 meeting.
So, if you're here for that case, we just invite you to come back then, what, it'll be four weeks from now? Otherwise, we will have four cases in front of us, and we will go through those. Basically, we will do the testimony like I talked about. That's part of the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. We'll do the public meeting, which is where the Board deliberates and renders a decision. And that's pretty much how we'll go through the cases. All testimony will be given from the podium through the mic. If you have a cell phone with you, which almost everybody does, please put it on silent or vibrate mode. And also, if you need to converse about anything during the meeting, we do ask that you step out of the hall and probably at that point, close the door, because the acoustics in here are very good, and the voices will carry up here as well. So I think that's a little bit of housekeeping, and with that, I'll move to read case number one into the record. So the applicant is -- the owner, I should say, sorry, is -- I'm probably going to butcher this, I apologize. John Alsikas, and the applicant is Guy Carone, 109 Chestnut Street, Sheet 97, Lot 96. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach two feet into the 20-foot required rear yard setback to construct an attached nine-foot by 16-foot, one-story home addition. This is in the RC Zone, Ward 4. Is there somebody here to -- please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and then please proceed.
Yes, good evening. Yes, I'm Guy Carron. My address is 70 Middle Dunstable Road, and this is for 109 Chestnut Street. Basically, we're asking for that two feet over the setback line, just to give him enough room to put a couch and a couple end tables. He just wants to sit out there in a three-season porch and get some fresh air with three large The structure will match the house. It'll look like it was built when the house was. The overhangs will match. The roof lines will match. It'll be a hip, just like the existing house. And there won't be any exterior lighting shining into the neighbors' eyes at night. And that's about it. It's only a one-story addition. The house is one-story as well.
Okay. Thank you. Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Neely?
Good evening. Quick question. In the yard, is there a shed in the yard? I couldn't quite tell when I did a drive-by there.
There is a shed in the yard, yes.
And that's staying there as well?
It's not connected, no.
But he's going to keep that too, right?
The shed is being kept, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Menkara, do you have a question?
So, it only goes in two feet into the setback.
That's correct.
Did you look at alternatives, like maybe doing a 12 by 14, or some other different dimension to?
Yeah.
The setbacks?
Yeah, we did. We felt that 14 would be a little too short to put a couch and a couple end tables and be able to walk in the addition from the existing house and have some area to walk out the door to get outside as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I think we're set. Thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anybody else that would like to testify in favor of 109 Chestnut Street? Is there anyone with questions, concerns, or opposition regarding 109 Chestnut Street? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I'm going to just probably start with doing this a little bit differently than what -- going back to the way, basically, we used to do things, which is I'll just generally open up the discussion on the case, so if anybody would like to weigh in initially, I'd still, hopefully, like to hear everybody's thoughts, but this way, if anybody's would like to, you know, start the discussion or has, you know, any special points to make or whatever, so basically, just open it up to -- so if any of you want to start us off, Mr. Boucher.
Sure. I'm in favor of the application. I think to Mr. Menkara's question was, you know, was one of the questions I had was whether or not we could stay within the setback. You know, during the testimony, as short as it was, I think it was pretty direct. I think they've thought out completely how they want to stop this room. I think it's reasonable, and furthermore, we're talking about 18 square feet. I don't think -- I don't believe I would notice that difference. That encroachment, I think it's extremely minor encroachment. And again, the addition's in line with the house. It's not protruding from the side. It's not, you know, any other setback. So I'm going to support the application for those reasons.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
I just, I agree with Mr. Boucher's comments, and the reason why I asked the question was, did you look at all the alternatives? It satisfied me that they did. The use itself is a reasonable use, and it's, you know, modest. The encroachment's modest.
Mr. Neely?
Yeah, so this is certainly in character with the neighborhood. Based on the way the house is set on the lot, but more important, the house, it looks like one West Artisan, that it's still going to have a good-sized yard back there. I, you know, was interested to see if folks showed up here from one West Artisan to say they were against it. They did not, so we'll assume that they're in favor. Also, when you look at the front of the property and down to the right side of the property, it looks like 107. That's a very large, long driveway. So really, it's still a ton of space between those houses as well. So for the reasons spoken of by my colleagues and just the setting of the house on this lot, I'm in favor of this as well.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm in favor. I mean, one thing to also note is that, actually, unlike a lot of the other homes nearby, this house actually, especially on the side where that is -- an addition is going, has a decent setback from the side yard, whereas many of the homes, and you kind of look up and down the street, are almost right on the side yard line. So I think as far as, you know, these homes are generally tightly packed on these lots as it is, and I think especially a rear yard encroachment is going to be really, I think, like noted already, pretty non-not noticeable. So for those, again, for the similar reasons, you know, that were stated already, I'm in support. Want to add something else, Mr. Menkara?
Yeah, I just, you know, just adding to that, the house is also setback further than most in the area.
Hmm, yeah.
Making it tougher to add on to the back.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Thank you. Would somebody like to offer a motion? Mr. Neely? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for John Alsikas, owner, Guy Carone, applicant 109 Chestnut Street, Sheet 97, Lot 96, requesting the variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach two feet into the 20-foot required rear yard setback to construct an attached nine-foot by 16-foot, one-story home addition. This is located in the RC Zone, Ward 4. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The Board did have discussion that the sighting of the building on this lot is slightly back from the street, which is atypical to what we see in that area. In addition, the way the house on West Artisan, one West Artisan, is located, the proposed addition really will not affect their backyard as well. We did have testimony from the applicant that the reason they were going for the extra 18 square feet is that it made it more comfortable for the applicant or the home dweller to move around safely inside of the house. We do believe this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We do not have any testimony that this will adversely affect the property values of the surrounding parcels. This is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Menkara, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. It passes 4-0. So good luck with your project, and as I kind of noted in introduction, we try to usually say this after most cases have been heard, there is a 30-day window of appeal. Somebody could, you know, bring that request, but you're more than welcome to proceed with the project, and -- but if you have any questions, certainly, again, contact Mr. Falk. Good luck.
When do I expect the permit?
You'll have to still go through the regular permit, but the City will issue the letter stating that the Board has approved this, and that goes out relatively quickly, right?
It goes out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or tomorrow, Thursday.
And I guess if they need to, they could even come into the office to get it directly if you need it, you know, as soon as tomorrow. So, all right. Yep, you're welcome. All right, we'll move on to case number two. The owners are Mamadou A. and Diannabu Balde, with the applicant Mamadou A. Balde at 39 Dexter Street, Sheet 102, Lot 129. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach two feet into the seven-foot required left-side yard setback to construct a second-story addition onto existing home. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 6. Welcome. Say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Mamadou Balde. I live -- my wife is here. We live 39 Dexter Street, Nashua, New Hampshire.
All right.
So.
Yeah, please go ahead and tell us what you want to do and why.
So the house is the Cape Cod. It has a second stall, and then we want to open up with a three-bedroom and two-bathroom. We have a growing family with four kids. We want to be able to have them separate room. That's why we're requesting this variance in order to go ahead and do this project. Come please. So we talked to our neighbor, the one just on the left of our house. He said to me, Mamadou, I wanted to do that, but I never get the chance to do it. If you can do it, good luck to you. It's good news. So I was happy. And then the neighbor and I also, they said they don't see any opposition to it. If you gentlemen, as the city, accept us to do it, it's a good project. Go ahead for it. So we looking for to get the permit so we can be able to accomplish our project.
All right, thank you. Does the Board have questions? I'm pretty sure this was in your application, but just for kind of the discussion. So the part of the point is, this second-story addition is -- this encroachment is following an existing encroachment on the -- from the first floor.
Yes.
Already, right?
Yes.
So that's part of your application is that you're not doing a further encroachment. You're just maintaining the same encroachment that already exists with the first floor?
Exactly.
Okay.
It just so the second floor is like that. We try and open it, give more space, square inch spacing.
All right, thank you. I think we're all set. Yeah, you can have a seat. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application for 39 Dexter Street? Seeing none, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to 39 Dexter Street? Again, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. First thoughts, anybody?
This is really straightforward for me. Isn't it a six-story house that already is in the side setback? And that's really the major -- the special condition of the property. So again, adding a second story, I think is more than reasonable. So for that, it's simply that, I'm going to support the application.
Mr. Menkara?
Yeah, I'll just add that, yeah, I would agree, there's no further encroachment, and it doesn't appear that there are any neighbors concerned about, you know, an impact to the property. So it seems pretty straightforward and reasonable to me.
And I'm also in support of the application, for the same reasons stated by my colleagues.
All right, yeah. And I am too, and I mean, if you actually take it almost like to what feels like kind of the silly extreme, like, I think it would actually look really bad to force somebody to have a two-foot encroachment, or not, you know, follow that line and recess by two feet, I should say, to meet this. So, because, you know, the reality is that encroachment still exists in the first floor, and then, you know, you're not going to ask them to remove that. So it's, I think it just -- we've seen a number of these cases through the years. It's usually, not that there's always the same outcome, but I think this is a typical kind of situation where there's nothing about this that seems to say that this is not the right way to proceed. And it was, you know, it was nice to hear that there's support from the neighbors as well, so. Unless there's any other discussion, would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Menkara? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Mamadou and Diannabu Balde owners and Mamadou Balde applicant for 39 Dexter Street, Sheet 102, Lot 129, for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach two feet into the seven-foot required side-yard setback to construct a second-story addition onto an existing home be approved. That's in the RB Zone in Ward 6. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Essentially, we find that the home is in the position that it is, and they're seeking merely to go up one story, so there is no further encroachment. And realistically, looking at the property, there are very few, if any, opportunities to expand the home without encroaching into a setback in some way. We find that it is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. It would allow for a reasonable use of the property for the growing family. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We certainly had no testimony to the effect that it would. It's not contrary to the public interest, and we do believe substantial justice would be done.
Second, I'm Mr. Neely. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? All right, and then that passes unanimously. So similar guidance as the last case, there's a 30-day window of appeal, but you're more than welcome to go ahead with your project as is, and you can generally assume that, you know, in all likelihood, there won't be any appeal and there won't be any further interruption, but just, we'd like to make sure that caution is understood for folks. So, and again, if you have any questions, definitely feel free to contact Mr. Falk. Good luck with your project. All right, again, case number three that was on our original agenda is the one that is moved out to four weeks from now. Mr. Boucher will be back in just a minute, so since we'll be doing the intro part of this, anyhow, I imagine he'll be back probably by the time I finish that part of things. So, for case number four, the owner is Park Place. The applicant is Crimson Properties LLC. The address is 111 Concord Street, Sheet 48, Lot 47. The request is for the following. Firstly, a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1. Item number six, to allow two duplex buildings on two recently subdivided lots, one per lot. And secondly, a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area where 14,520 square feet is required, 8,010 square feet proposed for duplex on proposed new lot 342. This is in the RA Zone, Ward 3. Welcome. Almost perfect timing as expected, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Goddysman &amp; Hollis, 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua. And I'm here representing the applicant Crimson Properties LLC, who is now the owner of the property as well. Recently closed on the property. They purchased it last week, and so they are both the owner and the applicant. With me this evening is the representative of the applicant. If there are any questions in particular, he'll be available to answer. And also, a representative, Hayner Swanson, the project engineer on it, again, for questions. This is a bit of an unusual request, least unusual for me. You all sit on them, so there might be -- you might have had this before, but I want to give a brief history of the property before I get too far along. The brief history is that the property was originally, some years back, actually, I understood it was a garage, and then there was an ice cream stand there, and then it became redesigned and redone by the architects, Carter and Woodruff. John Carter and Bliss Woodruff operated their office out of there for many years, and then it was sold to Weiner, Lynch, and Pillsbury, a law firm, and they were there for many years. And Weiner, Lynch, and Pillsbury eventually became Weiner &amp; Bennett. And Weiner &amp; Bennett owned it, and then, or a consortium, I should say, of members of Weiner &amp; Bennett owned it, but the law firm operated out of there. And then Weiner &amp; Bennett downsized, and the two partners that owned it decided that it really wasn't efficient for the number of lawyers in there, and they put the property on the market. It was on the market for over a year. Very few offers that they received. They just did receive a purchase and sale, which was quickly terminated after due diligence began. The property I would classify as depreciated. I would also classify it as obsolete, as an office building at this point in time. I've been in the office many times. It's a, if you've never been inside, it's a multi-story sort of cut-up, one could call it, sort of a Robert Warren setup, because there are some additions and some connections that are a little bit odd. There is a central staircase, but it's not an ideal office space. The owner, one of the owners is here this evening, one of the former owners is here this evening, but he's up and down in between meetings, so when it comes time, I'm not sure he'll be able to speak. So I'm going to make an offer of proof that what he would say is just what I said. It's fully depreciated. It is obsolete, and that reinvestment for office use is so substantial as to make it not practical. I hope he'll be able to get up and give that testimony when you call for it. The original thought of my client was, my client developed the property, which is right next door, the 12 condominium units for elderly housing. That is over 62, age up. His original thought was, I want to, I want to do something with this property, if possible. When there were no other offers on there, finally, my client was able to go in and negotiate a reasonable offer from my client's perspective, maybe not from Mr. Westgates, but he was able to acquire it at a price that allows him some flexibility. So what did he want to do? His first step was to meet with the City and determine what could be done there in terms of extending the condominium units. And it was determined by the City in writing that he could obtain approvals without coming to this Board for seven additional units. So you could extend the condominium line and tear down the building, extend it, and put up seven units for over 62 age. As an alternative, he could do six workplace housing units. And then the final alternative is if he could get the Board's permission for a special exception, he could do duplex, but the lot size is such that it ends up with a problem with the other lot for a second duplex unit. And the lot size, the lot itself, has this strange, you can call it a panhandle or an extension, and it also has odd topography in that there's the rear yard, and then there's this pan this panhandle, and if you had a chance to look at it, it just drops right off. So it's really not usable land, but it's qualified for enough area to allow a duplex there. So his first stop was to the planning board to see, what can I do here? If I want to do something, either a single-family home, or a second, or a duplex home, I've got to see if I can get a subdivision of this lot, I have to get a handle on the lot size, the lot area, the lot dimensions, what's out there for this property. And he looked into that, and was able to proceed to the planning board to find out if he could subdivide the property, which would allow him the flexibility to then come to this board to ask for what he needs for relief. So that's why you see the odd application of two duplexes on two lots, but it's only one legal lot at this time. You have to view it as a legal lot, because that subdivision has not been recorded. That's somewhat important when we get to the variance argument, in my opinion, but that's, that's the backstory. I think it's important, it's a little interesting to note that one of the lots qualifies in size, of course, the portion that allows it to qualify is practically useless, so it points out that really the two lots are about the same, and you'll hear me make that statement later on. As I said, he's proposing a subdivision of two lots, each with a duplex to be allowed thereon, but obviously, we can't put a duplex on one lot without a variance for the lot size. So you have this application of special exception to allow duplexes on two lots, but we need a variance on one of the lots to allow that to happen. My thought, and I leave it to the board, but my thought is, I think I would like to present the special exception for the use, because if you don't agree that the use would be allowed, the variance is really unnecessary. On the other hand, if I want the variance first, I could still have to go with a duplex on one, but I'd be left with none. So I think it's a whole application in one, but I'd like to proceed, Mr. Chair, with a special exception argument, and then I'd like to roll it to the variance argument, if that's okay.
Sure.
All is one hearing, rather than two separate.
Yep.
A special exception for the duplex. The first criteria is, is it allowed under permitted uses in the Table 190-15, and it is allowed, number six. So that first item is off. Will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Each duplex will generate a minimal amount of traffic. You received a letter from Hayner Swanson, which goes through traffic counts and makes a conclusion with regard to the impact of traffic, that there won't be any adverse impact on traffic or pedestrian safety. There is an existing walkway in front, so pedestrian safety, pedestrians are already taken care of, walking up and down Concord Street. Each duplex would have separate driveways with turning spaces, so cars will not be backing out, that's shown on the subdivision, which has been conditionally approved, so the city is aware of that and has approved that, so you won't have any traffic congestion for backing out. There is adequate room on the, did you not receive?
I don't think we have the Hayner Swanson letter that you were referencing.
I'll have, I'll, I didn't bring mine either. Do you have it in, at all?
I don't have it now.
Huh, okay. Well, I will, I will, I'll offer that there is an opinion, and Mr. Zajak is here, and he'll give a brief summary of what he did, and then his conclusion, and I apologize for The, I think what's important is, you have two duplexes, the traffic counts for duplexes are smaller than the traffic counts for office, so even combining the four units together, you have less traffic counts under the ITE code than you do with an office. You also have different peak hours, AM, PM peak, between an office, which is busy all day long, and a, and a home, which has clear PM peak and AM peak. But I think what's most important about whether or not there'd be some traffic impact is that critical turnaround driveway. You're going to have the cars coming, but they'll be able to turn around and not have to back out. They will, the character, the next criteria is, will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system. Again, offer a proof, we went to the city for a subdivision, there's water sewer and drainage, storm, public drainage available, so allowing the two duplex units won't overload the system any differently than any other use of that property. And number three is that the, granting the special exceptions to allow these duplexes will not impair the integrity or be out of character of the zoning district, nor will it be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the city as a whole. So what is the character of the zoning district? And, Mr. Chair, if I might, I have two exhibits that are somewhat relevant to this, that I could just pass forward, they're... So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, the two exhibits that I passed out, one is a tax map, it is colored, and I'll explain those colors in a minute, and the other is a graphic picture of the rendering of what is proposed, and what we would stipulate is going to be what the buildings, the two buildings look like when they're completed. I think the rendering also has them properly sighted, it shows you the setback from the street, it shows you the adjacent last of the elderly units that's right there, and it shows the wooded area, and of course Greeley Park. If I can explain the exhibit which is colored, this exhibit has coloring of blue, which is our subject lot, red, which is the units of the condominium, the elderly condominium, and on that, there are, there are two duplex units on the front, if you've driven by, there, there's a building which is essentially a duplex, and then in the rear, there are townhouse-style units, which are to the back. As you go across the street, the, what I would call the purple coloring is the church complex, that is the Mormon church, and then the yellow, the pictured yellows are a single-family with an in-law apartment, that's the closest proximity, 56-8, and then the other yellows are multifamily units, more than one, one unit, one's duplex, one has more than two in it. And then the green at the corner is, of course, the corner market that's there, and it's been there for a long time. So that kind of establishes what's in the immediate neighborhood, the other units, the other lots are single-family lots. Of course, there's a single-family to the rear, and then to the south, as I, as I'm sure you know, is Greeley Park. So that's the setting of the property, and we have to establish that we're not proposing, by this picture, by this graphic and by the proposed duplexes, to impair the integrity or be out of character of the neighborhood. So the character of the zoning district, it's an RA district, these uses are allowed as long as they are not out of character, there is an existing duplex, which is part of the elderly housing, right adjacent, we're going to be setback from the street slightly more than that building is. It is not out of character in that you go from the park to a little more dense housing, to across the street is the church, and then other alternative multifamily, as well as single-family. So I classify it as a mixed zoning district. We think duplex is a good use, my client would prefer to do duplexes, and this type of use, rather than trying to stuff six or seven more units on that property, because of its proximity to Greeley Park, it makes more sense that this type of housing is appropriate for this site. We believe it is a good transition. We also contacted the nearest condominium unit owner, met with, my client met with that owner, who is Mary Kemp, and Mary has authorized us to submit a letter, which she has signed. Dear members, I've had the opportunity to review the concept plans for the two proposed duplex lots. The concept plans include the exterior renderings of the units, some of the proposed green space, and the driveway parking space. Additionally, Randy Turmel of Crimson Properties has made himself available to answer any questions or address any concerns. I support the plan to build the two duplexes, I believe these two duplexes will complement the neighborhood. So I'll submit that letter. In addition, my client, do you want copies of that letter? I have to go. In addition, my client met with the residential, single-family residential unit to the rear on two occasions, disclosed what was going on, discussed it, and we believe that that neighbor was in favor. Neighbor indicated she may attend this evening, and she may not, so I don't know if she's here this evening, we haven't seen her, but she did not express opposition. There are no special regulations, so we don't have to meet with any special regulations, and I think with that, that's all the information that I can submit on the special exception request.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board?
We have the letter, so if I might introduce Tom Zajak to, he can read it to the board.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak, I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Apologize that this letter didn't get into your packets, but I'll just kind of read it verbatim as presented. Letter dated January 30th, 2024, addressed to Attorney Hollis. Dear Attorney Hollis, the proposed project involves the construction of a duplex building on each of the newly subdivided lots located at 111 and 113 Concord Street, which will be their addresses. Each residence will have a two-car, two garage spaces, along with two exterior driveway spaces. As part of the project, the existing sidewalk, located along the site's frontage on Concord Street, will be reconstructed in kind. Based on previous traffic studies and 2019 DOT data, this section of Concord Street carries an annual average daily traffic volume of approximately 11,282 vehicles per day, with weekday traffic volumes in the area reaching peak levels between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and from 9:00 p.m., I'm sorry, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., which are typical commuter periods. The Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE trip generation calculations, indicate the proposed duplex development will generate approximately 27 daily vehicle trips, with two of those trips occurring during the AM peak, and two trips during the PM peak. The majority of these trips will be exiting from the site during the morning and arriving during the evening, given the residential use. Given the above information, it is our opinion that the project-related traffic increases, while measurable, are negligible compared to the overall traffic volumes in Concord Street, and can be adequately accommodated within the existing infrastructure. Furthermore, the proposed use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to software and connectivity today.
Yeah, I was thinking something similar to that.
If you have any questions on the special exception, I'm happy to answer them, but otherwise, I'll roll to the variance, and you may have questions about both of them at the end, if that's all. So as I say, I ask you to, beginning to consider the property as a currently existing single lot, because that's what it is, and we propose that we would like to subdivide and put two duplexes, but we need relief from the density requirement for the duplex. The proposed lot, the subdivision has been completed, and it was done in order to determine exactly how small that lot would be, how much short we would be in terms of the density requirements, what the property would look like, and to have a plan to present to you this evening to make it meaningful, rather than just arguing, we have this lot, and we want to put two duplexes on it. I would note that we've submitted the one letter of support of the immediate neighbor. If you see fit to grant a special exception on the lot that's legally sized to accommodate it, you're going to have the condominium units, then the duplex, and then this other lot would remain. So that just changes the neighborhood if you focus only on this small lot. Otherwise, if you view the whole lot as a whole, which I do, then you have to look at it, at the criteria in light of a single, large lot. The proposed use is not contrary to the public interest. As you know, the standard for whether it's public, contrary to public interest is, is the use essentially a permitted use? Will, will the variance alter the character of the neighborhood, and will there be a threat to public health, safety, and welfare? And in this instance, the issue is lot size, so we don't pay attention particularly to the use, that's your determination under a special exception. What you have to pay attention to is, will the lot size, and therefore allowing a duplex on it, will that alter the character of the neighborhood? As I mentioned early on, the tail or the panhandle of the lot itself renders that portion, which does fulfill the lot size requirement for a duplex, really useless. So I would argue the two lots are the same in terms of usability and functionality. Why won't this alter the character? Not only are the mixed uses in the neighborhood, there is a transition from Greeley Park to this lot, to the little bit bigger lot, to the heavier-density adult, and then down to the single-family as you go farther down Concord Street. We think that it won't affect any of the existing uses, it is a good transition, it is immediately adjacent to a very public space, the park. If you cross over that driveway between the park and this lot, you have that area, which is really one of the, probably the lesser-use portions of the park in that immediate area. So you have not only the backyard with a fence that's existing, but you have Greeley Park, so we would argue that there's really adequate space out there that won't alter the character. Putting up the two duplex buildings, replacing the large office building, it's about the same size, only split, so you're going to have, each one will have square footage on the floor of about 1,500, so 3,000 square feet for each, the two, for each building. In this case, on this lot, you will have a 3,000-square-foot building, and the other lot will be 3,000. You'd end up with about the same size as the current office building, except the office building there is a singular blob or big block. So these buildings will be separated, we would argue the impact will be less. It won't threaten the health, safety, or welfare if you were to grant the variance for lot sa, lot density, in that there's public water, sewer, and storm, and so density really doesn't come into play in the health, safety, and welfare issue if you grant the variance. The second requirement is, would you observe, granting the variance observe the spirit of the ordinance? Well, the zoning ordinance has a general spirit and intent, as you know, to preserve property values, make sure there's not overcrowding, and to generally keep uses in the same area. I've already made my case of the uses, it's a mixed-use neighborhood, and I believe that this duplexes fit in, I think it's a good transition. So you're really looking at the issue of, if you grant the variance and allow a duplex on, to go on this lot, will in fact there be too much density? Will there be overdevelopment? As I say, it's going to be identical to the one next door, just has a little bit less square footage. But what you have is an established backyard, established fence, and we would propose that we are agreeable to a condition of approval, because it's my client's intent, that there be some additional landscaping along the fence, in our side of the fence, some additional landscaping for trees, so that you not just have a fence, but it's going to be a buffer between the building and the single-family house next door. Currently, if you've driven by it, there's no landscaping whatsoever, my client would like to add additional landscaping in the form of trees to provide some screening. And we agree to that condition, if you see fit to grant it, and make that a condition. The requirements of, so that's the general spirit, and then if you look, as many zoning boards do, well, what's the specific spirit and intent of this particular ordinance? And again, I think it's all about density and use, and is there adequate space to fit two units on this lot? two units on this lot? And I would argue that there is. You have the large backyard, which is usable, and you have the adjacent property Greeley Park. I would also add that the spirit of the zoning ordinance, as you know, is to discourage non-conforming uses. And in this case, you have an existing non-conforming use. It's pre-existing, it's lawful, it's an office building. It really doesn't fit there. It got there, it's there, but now it's the last, literally the last undeveloped lot in that area. When this building either comes down or is changed to a different use, it's really the last, the last hole in the donut as we speak. If the spirit and intent of an ordinance is to discourage non-conforming uses, the only way to discourage them is to allow a use that allows, gives you adequate return on your investment in order to tear that non-conforming use down or convert it to a conforming use. You can't really convert that to a conforming use. It's way too big for a house. Might be big enough for a duplex, but you'd have to gut the entire thing out. It's, it's, it's 6,000 square feet. It's a big building. So you have to look at, well, what's reasonable in order to comply with the spirit of the ordinance, in order to discourage non-conforming uses? And what's reasonable is a reasonable return. And we think putting four units on that single lot is a good return. Four units on the two lots, two on each lot. Number three, substantial justice will be done. The building has outlived its useful life. A significant investment into the non-conforming use would be required to keep that as an office building in a declining office space. So it'll, granting the variance will allow a reasonable use, as I said, a reasonable investment to get a return on that investment would be for a duplex unit. Granting will not harm the public. You have to do this balance test of, well, if we grant it, what's the harm versus the benefit to the owner? Granting it will not harm the general public or others in that you're replacing a non-conforming use with theoretically a conforming use if a special exception is granted. It's a mixed use, it's a good transition, and the neighbors are okay with it. It's better for the public if you grant it. So in the balancing act, you have to first find harm to the public, and we would say there is no harm. Therefore, it doesn't outweigh the benefit to the owner. Number four, will not diminish the values of surrounding properties. The permitted use, if the special exception is granted, is a permitted use. It is a use which fits within the neighborhood. It's a use that exists in the neighborhood. We think that that's not going to affect the values. But to follow up on that, I did ask an independent appraiser. Hopefully that made it into your package. I do have that copy with me. But Mr. Rogers viewed the property, walked at the property, viewed everything in the neighborhood, and opined, as you know from that letter, that it would not adversely affect the values of the properties. That brings us to the final argument, which is most notably always the hardest argument, and that's the hardship argument. And when you start this, your first reaction is, isn't this a self-imposed hardship? I mean, you bought the land, you knew what the use was, you're stuck with the non-conforming use, yeah. But you're entitled to, whatever property you have, you have to get a reasonable use out of it. And that office isn't a reasonable use. So in order to get rid of that, you have to get a reasonable return on your investment. What's a reasonable return? We think we've got to propose reasonable use. That is the third prong of the argument. I have to first find out, is this a unique property? Well, we think it's a unique shape. It has that useless end of it. It sits there on Concord Street, surrounded by, on one side, fairly dense permitted elderly housing. Across the street, permitted fairly dense and active church. And on the other side and across the street kitty corner is Greeley Park, which one might argue is not fairly dense, but it's pretty active. And if you go by in a weekend, it's pretty active. That area is zoned RA. Those lots are not conducive. Those two lots, or even a single lot as you view it, are not conducive to single family. So subdivision is created. We have one lot which can get a duplex. That's going to leave this one lot we're focusing on. If the, if you deny the special exception or you deny the variance, you end up with a lot which is really only usable as a single-family lot. That is a terrible location. Well, why isn't it okay for single family, which is down the hill and behind? Because it's down the hill and behind and away from all of the street traffic and away from all the activity of the church and away from the activity of the park and away from the activity of the condominiums. It is a totally different environment down the hill. So that's single family, we're up on the street. So the first prong is, do you have a unique lot? And we think we do. Either as a whole, because of its shape, its topography, its location, or as a single subdivided lot, if you want to look at it that way. That single subdivided lot will be the ultimate hole in the donut. If you grant a special exception for the duplex of a neighboring lot and you deny it for this one, you will have a single lot, which is the hole in the donut. And that is the epitome of a unique lot, when it's the only lot left in the neighborhood of that size and of that location. So based on that uniqueness, we then look at, is there any fair and substantial relationship to the enforcement of the ordinance? And in this case, requiring that this property not be allowed to have a duplex, that it has to be, this lot would have to be single family. Or something else would have to be done with the lot as a whole. And we know what that something else would be. Alternatively, be seven elderly units. So is there a fair and substantial relationship to the whole purpose of not creating too much density in a neighborhood? Well applied to this lot, the answer is no. This is a unique situation because of what's built up around it. And as I say, it was a commercial office building lot. We want to tamp down the density and put up residential use. We want it to be more conforming, but we can't get all the way to single family. That's not a reasonable use. So we don't think there is a fair and substantial relationship to enforcement. And then finally, is what we propose reasonable? Well, that will be in your determination. If you think that duplex is a good use and you grant special exception, then that's a reasonable use of the property, we feel, given the zoning ordinance. So it's really up to you to decide on the special exception. If so, we think that's a reasonable use because it would be a permitted use. With that, I think I've concluded all my arguments, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Mr. Boucher?
You just reviewed again, you had, I think I remember there was three options that you had looked at.
Yes.
The option with, the potential option to add, I think, seven more units
Yes.
to the, to the existing project and, you know, combine that land. How, how did that compare, or how's that compare on, when you look at the project and the density? How does that compare to what you're proposing now?
Well, there'd be four units versus seven units on the same piece of land. So one is elderly and one is not restricted, not age-restricted. So theoretically, in all honesty, you might have children in the duplex, but you wouldn't have children in the age 62. 1,500 square feet, those are pretty small duplex units, so the likelihood is, this isn't going to be an intense activity on the site. But if it is, as I said, they have, they have a backyard. Next door, the condominium units, the existing units, they do not have the backyard. That topography drops off immediately. So what they have in the front is what they have. This has a backyard to it.
Thank you.
I think we're all set.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of 111 Concord Street?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name's Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett, 402 Amherst Street in Nashua. I'm also one of the four partners of Greeley Park Associates, which was the partnership that owned the building until five days ago. It was initially formed by my long-ago partners. Forty-five-plus years ago, we owned the building for almost 48 years, and I spent a few, more than a few hours in that building for the past 46 years nearly. It was a little sad listening to Attorney Hollis speaking, but what he said was true. The building is obsolete. It's fully depreciated from a physical perspective. It's nearly fully depreciated from a tax perspective. We did put the property on the market over a year ago. There were initial interests from an office point of view. Again, one purchase and sale agreement was signed, but it terminated fairly promptly. Over time, there was some interest in kind of mixed use, a sort of office with some alternative ideas. Those probably needed, and I really, they did need significant renovation to be a reality. So even though there was some interest, they never materialized to anything substantial that came close to purchase and sale agreements. And then over time, the marketing just didn't generate much at all despite price reductions that we had done. So it really became, I think, pretty apparent that, at least in today's market, that property, its uniqueness, its age, its need for renovation, just didn't draw our interest from an office purchase perspective anymore. Just a couple other thoughts. I, I've always thought that the proximity to Greeley Park made this property unique. There's other unique aspects too, as Attorney Hollis has outlined, but that was always one. And I do think that its proximity to Greeley Park ties very nicely to the potential residential use that could now be made. And I think the duplex perspective for two parcels fits well with that idea, frankly. So I appreciate your time, and I hope you give this good consideration. Thank you.
Attorney Westgate, I don't think the board has any questions, but thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of 111 Concord Street? Okay, seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to 111 Concord Street? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Way in, Mr. McCarver?
I'm kicking it off. So I, I do support, you know, both the special exception and the variance. And if we did get to the point of voting, I'd probably want to take them together, just because I really do think that they're linked. You know, I will say I've always liked that building. So kind of sad to you go, but heck, I like the church next door too, so. But I, I do think that, I mean, I guess I'll start by focusing on uniqueness. First of all, there is an existing non-conforming use of the property. When it went up on the market, I wondered whether there would ultimately be a buyer. The office market is a tough market. So I, I think that it's reasonable that a residential use would replace it. The density of what's proposed, I think, is also reasonable, given the multifamily use next door and the overall density in the surrounding area. And I do think, you know, coming back to the special conditions of the property, the building is a condition of the property, as is the kind of unusual shape with the dog leg and the kind of useless strip that drops below it. And, and also, not that it's a detriment to the property, but the fact that it is located next to Greeley Park. I think all those factors do speak to the uniqueness. What's proposed, I think, is consistent with the character of the area, both the density and really probably building massing as well. I cannot imagine that two duplex units are going to create undue traffic. Clearly not. We have testimony to that effect. We see no evidence that it will impair surrounding property values. We have evidence to that effect. So I think overall, I, you know, I would support both applications.
Thank you. Mr. Neill or Mr. Boucher care to comment? Mr. Neill?
Yeah, I'm also in favor of this application, both, both the special exception and the variance. You know, Mr. McCarver brought up most of my points, and I appreciate that. You know, I think we all realize that, that office buildings are not a hot property right now. We've been here in this whole last year and a half, two years, that it is tough to, to move certain office properties off the market. I do believe this is a creative way to make an adjustment back to housing. We know we need housing. You know, I very much appreciate this area, and it's funny how some people look at Greeley Park as a blessing and some as a curse, based on where the housing is located. Honestly, I think this is a great transition from Greeley Park into the neighborhood. We had the, the testimony and really this great chart of the breakdown of what there already is for uses in the neighborhood. I think this will fit right in there. I really was impressed with how they are doing the turnaround driveway to really get, you know, keep, keep folks from backing out into the road. You know, I went there on a Friday for a drive-by, Friday midday, and I didn't see any evidence of 11,000-plus cars per day, but it, you know, it was the time of day. You know, we do, we know it gets, it gets busy there. So I really think these folks have put quite a bit of thought into this. I really was waiting to see if the, the neighbor behind was going to show up here tonight. We did get testimony from these folks that they've talked to the neighbor and that she is in, in favor. I am loving what I'm hearing to build more of a buffer between the properties with trees because there is a pretty significant drop-off, and these folks would be looking right into this person's front yard. You know, I honestly think that, that Counselor Hollis really hit all of the points here that were necessary for both the special exception and the variance, so I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you.
I'm also in favor of the application, for reasons spoken to. And again, I think the main thing is the, the impact of the usage, I think, is that potential can be, you know, significantly less than if this was a viable, still viable office space.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in support also. I mean, I think, I think there is a point of it going from more non-conforming to less non-conforming. I think that is always appreciated. I think especially the idea of office space there doesn't, in some ways, really fit the character, I think, generally. But I was thinking and curious of, you know, one of the early things I was thinking, I was like, well, what about extending the condo development? And in some ways, it does seem like that would be actually more significant as far as impact, but even just at least thinking about it a little bit further. Also, is, I feel like if, if that were to be done, there might be more of a sense of that is even, is like a bigger installation, if you will, or whatever, and less transition between everything else. Seeing this rendering and these, idea of these duplexes, it really feels like it's a much kind of better way to make some of the transitions within the neighborhoods. I definitely appreciate that as well. So, you know, I, pretty much everything else that was stated already, I think, covered things well. So I think it seems like maybe we're ready to go ahead and do some motions. I mean, it does seem like we still should actually do two separate motions
Different criteria.
because there are different criteria.
Different points of law.
And different, so I know you made the point, but I think what we a lot of times do when these is pretty much do the one motion and go right into the second one. So, so I would do the special exception first, yeah. So does somebody want to, to do that, or?
I'll do it.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCarver.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the application of Park Place owner, Crimson Properties LLC, the applicant, for 111 Concord Street, Sheet 48, Lot 47, for a special exception from Land Use Code 19015, Table 15-1, Number 6, to allow two duplex buildings on two recently subdivided lots, one per lot, be approved. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. Duplexes are a permitted use. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian activity, or, I'm sorry, pedestrian safety, and we do have a letter from the engineer to that effect. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal system. It's merely four units in a fairly developed area. Special regulations are fulfilled, and it would not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, and welfare of the residents. And again, we've had evidence that, in fact, it would be within the character of the area, both in terms of density and appearance.
All right, second by Mr. Boucher, thank you. Any...
Any discussion on the motion for the approval of the special exception? If not, all in favor? That passes unanimously? Would you like to go ahead with the summary?
Sure. Harry Varens? I'd like to make a motion that the application of Park Place owner, Crimson Properties LLC, applicant, at 111 Concord Street, Sheet 48, Lot 47, for a variance. Got to find my place now. For, to allow two duplex units on two recently subdivided lots, one per lot. And this is from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet required, eighty, eight thousand and ten square feet proposed for a duplex on the proposed new lot, 342. This is in the RA zone, Ward 3. We find that variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved for some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that the specific, particular characteristics of the property include its unusual dog leg shape with the significant drop-off in the rear, as well as the fact that, importantly, that there is an existing nonconforming use, an office building, on the property today. It'd be challenging to redevelop it in a different way. And the fact that it is located between a fairly densely developed 62-plus development and Greeley Park on the other side. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. In fact, it would be making a nonconforming property more conforming, and that it is also, you know, perhaps a better transition between the park, the neighborhoods to the south, and the senior housing to the north. We find that it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding properties, and we do have testimony to that effect. That it would not be contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice will be done in allowing a reasonable use of the property.
Do you want to add the stipulation that the applicant noted regarding the vegetation along the back fence that they said they were going to do, but I think welcomed it as a stipulation, so we could just add that in the approval?
I'm certainly happy to, yes.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Boucher, you second it? All right. Just one point of discussion I meant to note earlier also is that sometimes when we have these kind of subdivisions, we also see that to make the one lot conforming, sometimes the second lot is, is like, kind of, ends up being kind of maybe awkwardly sized or whatever, just because of the way the math works. It was nice to see that maybe just perhaps the luck of things, that that dog leg, that kind of not really viable space, seemed to be enough to bring the two lots so that they're, you know, where they're divided along the frontage of the property is relatively consistent. So we don't have, like, one duplex sitting on a much wider lot and one sitting on a narrower lot. So again, maybe it was just kind of the luck of the situation, but I did appreciate that there's not going to be some awkward setting or sizing that's here. And I think it did work out that the kind of usable, kind of, you know, presentable area for these two proposed duplexes would be very similar. So I thought that was just kind of helpful as far as consistency in this transition of doing things. So I just kind of wanted to have that somewhere in our discussion on the record. But is there any other comments otherwise? So go ahead and ask.
Just a point, or just when I was, we were listening to...
Yeah, come to the, well, first of all, let me, yeah, all right.
It's just, I believe that the square footage cited is not correct with the application that was made. The application is for 7984 square feet, where 14,520 is required. And I just want to be sure we're on the same page. There was a prior subdivision plan, and then the plan that was submitted to correct the square footage was 7984 square feet.
Seven nine eight four.
Yeah, otherwise you end up...
Which is, which is less than what's advertised and what we stated, so.
And that's important in that if you, otherwise, if you use eight thousand square feet, the other lot doesn't conform. It falls short. So we had corrected that in the submission of a revised plan.
And I'd be happy to amend the motion to that effect.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that. And we, you know, as Attorney Hollis knows, we don't usually, most people know, we don't usually take additional testimony, but I appreciate that, just so we have it properly documented and made sense. Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor of the variance? And that passes unanimously. You obviously know well the drill regarding rehearing requests. I won't go into that any further. Thank you. Good night, good luck with the project. We have one additional case before us tonight. Let's find my, go back to the paperwork. That is, owner is Seven Factory Street LLC. The applicant is Brian S. Zagoritis. The address is seven-nine Factory Street, Sheet 78, Lot 8. The request is for a use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 6, to add a second floor onto an existing commercial space and convert the building into a two-family residential building. This is in the D1 MU zone, Ward 4. Welcome, and please state your name and address for the record, and tell us about what you want to do.
Brian Zagoritis, Seven Factory Street, Nashua. Yeah, I think, I think this one's kind of simple. The building originally was two floors...
Actually, can you just raise the mic up some? Well, you're welcome to take it hands-free, but yeah, just raise it, because it makes sure we get you on the record.
The building, as far as I can tell from the history books, it was originally two floors, and it burned down in 1965. When they reconstructed, they only built one floor, hence the seven and nine. So it's already got two numbers designated to it. I've owned the building for about six years, and I've gone through, being a designer, I've gone through several iterations of what we were going to do with it, all the way up to adding ten or twelve apartments on the building and adding three to four floors. Watching the development around the city and all the apartments that are being built, I kind of started losing my steam on that whole project. So I've kind of backtracked to just wanting to create, and again, all of that, which I just mentioned, is all approved without this hearing. It's just that now I'm just trying to do two units, which apparently in the, in the city, in that zoning location, a duplex, if you will, is not permitted. So I'm basically trying to create one two-floor apartment for my wife and I to use while we're in town, because we have other properties in other states that we're managing, and we bounce back and forth. And then just to convert the front section of the building to a residential rental unit versus a commercial space, because again, unless I want to put a tattoo parlor or a barber shop in there, you know, downtown retail space or a bar, it doesn't seem like it's really the happening thing these days. And I'm good with all those other businesses that are downtown, but I just don't want to open up my space to one of those. So I think I'd be more apt to keep it rented on a regular basis to a local employee that wants to just walk back and forth to work and not even have a vehicle, if that's their choice. The second floor of the structure would sit approximately halfway back in the building. So the building is a hundred feet long, so I'm not even going to start the second floor until fifty feet back from Factory Street. So the, you know, the appearance from Factory Street is going to be minimal of what's happening on the back half. I have complied with the amount of window square footage that would be required for the front of the building to keep it in the proper, you know, setup, so that if somebody in the future decided to bring that back to a retail establishment or use it more commercially, it would be already constructive for that. So that's basically it. I've already got a two-car garage built into the back of the building, so we have off-street parking for the building itself. And it's basically just, you know, just adding that second floor to the back half.
All right, thank you. I do have a question for you, Mr. Falk, first. Is this, is this one of those things that I feel like I remember from a long time ago, that we have this odd thing that, that we allow all the multi-unit buildings in the downtown, but we don't allow duplexes? For some reason, it's this weird gap that we've, I think we've run across at least once before? And that's what basically this case is?
That's correct.
This kind of... Okay.
Right around the corner from him is 150 units. It's almost constructed, and they didn't even go to this board or the planning board. Multifamily is permitted. Three or more is a permitted use by right, as long as other criteria are met with the building code. But single families, so you think of the D1 zone, you really think of Main Street. Single-family homes not permitted, duplex units not permitted, but multifamily is.
Okay, so it's both single-family and duplexes, okay. All right. So are there any questions from the board, meanwhile? Mr. Neely?
Did I hear you write that the setup is going to be one apartment with two floors? How's the setup?
Yeah, the apartment we are keeping for ourselves would be two floors. So our, basically, our sleeping quarters would be on the upper level with exterior roof deck and things of that nature. The first floor, I'm going to maintain like a home office area and, you know, just a game room, if you will, maybe a pool table and stuff like that. But the second floor will be our living quarters. The first floor will be our entertaining slash work space, and then the front would just be a separate apartment. Thank you.
And, well, this is not a historic district thing?
No.
Okay, that was one thing. I figured it wasn't, that we would have heard and known that, but, yeah, I must say, it looks like a really interesting plan. I hope it works out for you. Yeah, I don't think we probably have any other questions. All right, you can have a seat. And obviously, we have nobody else in the auditorium here, so I'm not going to even ask if there's any other testimony, so.
I did discuss it with all my neighbors, too, and nobody was opposed to anything that I was proposing.
Okay, thanks for letting us know that as well.
As the applicant stated, we have met with him several times in this property.
Yeah.
For all, many, many different iterations, and it does meet the D1 standards for architectural treatments in the front, and...
Yeah, all right, thank you. Yeah, so I'll close the public hearing, again, noting that there is no other attendees in the auditorium, so there's no other testimony to be heard tonight. And I'll open our public meeting. Anybody have first thoughts? Mr. Neely?
This is, this is a very creative design. This is, this is pretty neat. This is a pretty neat design. You know, we all know that we have a housing crunch here. I am a big proponent of putting any additional housing downtown. I think this is a creative way to do it in this, this shoeboxt building. It's, I always wanted to know it was in the back, behind that garage door. I think this is a very creative way to do it. It's not going to tower over his neighbors at all, because it's going to start fifty feet back. Not really going to change the whole, whole street front at all, so it'll fit right into the character of that area. I, you know, having an upscale apartment like this downtown, I think just brings up just the value of all those areas. We did have some, he stated at the end here, he did talk to his neighbors, and nobody was opposed. We have nobody here opposed to it. So, so really, for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Boucher?
Again, quite a unique proposal here, and I think it's kind of neat in a way. But almost if I was a city, really want to work in a city, it's a place I want to live, I think, right? Got the parking, got the garage, got the, nice place.
I agree, yeah.
I think, you know, notwithstanding, you know, the zone and what's allowed there, you know, and what the projects are around him, as the applicant stated, I think what's kind of convincing to me is, is that what he's proposing is not, something that's going to stay in character with the zone. Again, like anybody else, no one knows how long a property will be owned by this owner, but certainly is giving some, some thought to any potential down the road. Not that saying that we want to see this building in front of us all the time for changes, but it would keep this character of a type of a storefront, type of, type of a setup. I guess I don't see anything that would cause me not to want to support the application. I find it's unique. I actually like it.
Mr. McCarry, anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I would just add that, you know, initially, when I saw this application, I did have some concern that we would be losing ground for retail, which I never liked to see in our downtown area. But I think this is, you know, well-done, it's well-designed, and I would certainly, you know, two factors there, can't disagree. There is a fair amount of vacancy in retail space downtown, and I appreciate that this is designed in a way that in the future, should someone want to put a retail space back in, they could. Otherwise, this is a long and narrow lot. It would be challenging to develop it for multifamily. Not impossible, but it would be much more challenging. So given that, I think it's a reasonable use.
Yeah, I'm in support, and, you know, I think the fact that this, and the thing with the second, adding the second floor back on, knowing that it is part of the historical, you know, presence that this building had, you know, so, you know, fifty years or so ago, is also a very reasonable kind of aspect of kind of further developing this property. So, so, yeah, I think it seems like we're all generally in support. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Seven Factory Street LLC owner, Brian S. Zagoritis, applicant, seven-nine Factory Street, Sheet 78, Lot 8, requesting a use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 6, to add a second floor onto an existing commercial space and convert the building into a two-family residential building. This is located in the D1/MU zone in Ward 4. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and that benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board did have discussion that this is a semi-unique property and that it is a very square or rectangular-shaped building that would be, if they currently try to convert to a multifamily living residence, it would be challenging because of the way the setup is. The setup of this proposed two apartments would allow this to convert back to retail in the future, which is more in, in the flavor of what the downtown could be in the future. The applicant did make a testimony that they had looked at several different ways to convert this property, including things that would not have needed to come before the zoning board, specifically if it was a three-family or more, and decided that the two-family was more in character with what they were trying to do here. We have, we do find this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We do not have any testimony one way or the other. We do not believe this is contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served.
Thank you. Mr. McCarry, for the second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously, four zero. You've heard me talk about the rehearing request. It seems unlikely, but just a fair warning that that, and if you have any questions about any of it, but obviously, you've been working with Mr. Falk and the staff, so if you need anything, contact him. Thank you, good luck. All right. We have no, no rehearing requests. We have the upcoming agenda for the, let's see, what would that be, the March 12th meeting? It looks like we have five cases. Did anybody see any regional impact concerns?
No.
No from Mr. Boucher, no from myself, and I see shaking heads, no from Mr. McCarry and Mr. Neely, so I think we're good there. We don't have any minutes. We don't have any minutes.
They weren't ready yet.
And I think that is all we have for business, so move to adjourn. I think we might be eight o'clock on the dot. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.